Like to welcome everyone to April 16th Fayetteville City Council's special meeting. As we call the meeting to order, we will begin with item 2.0, which is invocation. We ask that all would rise for the prayer. Instead, Councilmember Wright, if you don't mind, would give us a prayer?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, all wise and knowing God, we come before you this evening, first to say thank you for your grace and mercy. Bless us in our endeavors in this meeting tonight, God. We pray that you would be with us, give us wisdom and knowledge. Help us, oh God, to make right decisions according to your heart, your word, and your purpose for this great city. Bless our mayor and our city council, and the staff, and the citizens of this great city. For God, you have put us on your heart. You know the thoughts that you have toward us, thoughts of good and not of evil, to bring this city to an expected end. Bless us now in Jesus' name, amen.
If you could join us for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, as we move along the agenda, item 3.0 is the approval of the agenda. This time we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilmember Art, a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? This is for the approval of the agenda. Counsel, I ask for your vote. Mr. Williams, approve of the agenda. Madam Clerk, is unanimous. Moving along to item 4.0, items of business. We would like to welcome each of you for joining us tonight. Since the first time that we've heard about the controversy between our colleague, Councilmember Williams, and the PCH Holdings, our private, public-private partners involving the redevelopment of the project known as Prince Charles Hotel and its adjacent properties, I have urged the council, and we have committed as a council, to finding and to finding all facts and to operating in a transparent matter that restores the public trust in this situation. And I thought it fitting today that we would speak with our legal department as we move forward, and what our options are as a body. Today, as we have this meeting, we'll ask legal to make the presentations and the recommendations to this board so that we can make an informed decision as to what the next steps are pertaining to this matter. And at this time, I will give way to the city attorney, Madam Karen McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I have a PowerPoint, and Brandon's gonna try to help me get it started. Mayor and council, as a result of Councilmember Williams' refusal to resign, I was asked by the mayor to discuss what council's legal options might be as it pertains to the removal of Councilmember Williams. That process is a petition for emotion, or in emotion. And so I will go through that process, certainly entertain any questions, and receive direction from the council. Hopefully, you all have the slides before you. So what is, what is a motion? It's the only mechanism to remove a council member in North Carolina. It's an action by the city council, and that action to remove a council member is based on just cause. So let's talk about how it works. There are five basic steps. Those five steps are listed on the slide. I will not read the slide, but I will go over those five different steps, one at a time. So beginning with the council issues a petition. It's a resolution. It is a resolution that's issued by the council. It is signed by the city attorney on behalf of the council. There's no waiting period required. Council can vote on the issuance of the petition in the same meeting that it is brought before the council for consideration. The petition is generally prepared by the city attorney, or the city's legal staff, and signed by the city attorney. The petition must be served on the council member. Personal service is required, and is generally done, or at least in the two processes, because this process hadn't been used often, but in the two processes that we're aware of, it's done by the city attorney, city clerk, excuse me, or law enforcement. In New Hanover County, that was the sheriff. Here for the city of Fayetteville, that would be the chief of police. But there is no particular person that has to serve it, but it's certainly recommended that, once it is served, that that person make a notation as to when it was served, the date that it was served. In serving that petition, that petition would also include the information related to when the hearing would be held. And we'll also talk about the procedures that would be used in serving, in, in the hearing. So let's talk about setting the date. Generally, that date would be 30 days from when the petition is issued, or at least a minimum of 30 days. Generally, continuances are not allowed, but certainly may be allowed in the discretion of the council, if the council member needs additional time to prepare their defense. The council member is entitled to legal representation by legal counsel. The council would hold a, would sit as a quasi-judicial body. You all have done that before, and quite frequently do that. The hearing must be fair and impartial. The council would sit, just like you do with other quasi-judicial hearings, you would preside. The council would be represented by the city attorney, or a designated of the city attorney's office. The rules of evidence do not apply. Live testimony is given, and that testimony is given under oath. The council members cannot be called to testify, and the, and the member that is facing recusal, or their legal counsel can certainly cross-examine any witnesses that the city may bring forward. Decision by the council. The decision by the council is based only on the evidence presented during the hearing. To remove the council member, there must be just cause of the evidence that is presented. The connection between the evidence that is presented should be related to the official duties of the council member. The decision of the council must be unbiased, and result solely from the evidence presented by the hearing. If the member, the remember, the, the member, excuse me, is removed based upon a finding of just cause arising from the misconduct in office, and it is by majority vote of the council. If the council were to vote to remove, a majority of the council were to vote to remove the council member, then that seat would be immediately considered to be vacated. But the council could not engage in a process to fill that seat until the appeal process that, until the appeal process expires. So the council member, should they not like the decision of the council, i.e. to remove them, then they would have the option to appeal, be called a writ of certiorari to Superior Court. Any questions?
Councilmember Art, and then I had a couple of follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, you just described that there's an appeals process. Do you know what the length of time is for the appeals process?
Generally, with any type of writ, you would have 30 days to file the writ with the court. But then I don't know in terms of how long the court would have to take it out.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Attorney, as I was reading, you referenced the, the case that, that I had found. It's the New Hanover County Commissioner Berger, was that the case?
Mm-hmm.
Speaking of, okay. And in that, as I read the judge's comments about it, Judge, Judge Gale, he said that the requirements for a valid a-motion are the following: due process, notice of hearing, but it says due process, a valid a-motion proceeding must include a notice of hearing, fact-finding by an impartial decision-making board where evidence is presented. In this case, if, if the body made a decision to move forward with that, and we heard that, one, can the same body that has participated thus far be considered impartial? And two, what is the fact-finding process that we've taken? As you know, I've been very adamant about an independent review, because, you know, to this point, I'm not, I'm not totally sure if there's other evidence that exists other than the audio tape, that we obviously all have referenced that. But what would be the, the evidence or the fact-finding process that meets criteria number one? And that, that's my first question, and I had a follow-up to there.
Well, it is based on the, the conduct of the council member, which at this point includes the tape. Certainly, there would be some investigation by the staff to determine what other facts, but essentially, that would, that would come forward with the witnesses that are presented during the hearing.
Okay, all right. And, and speaking to the impartiality of the board, are we able, if this was appealed, I heard you say it would go to Superior Court, would this body be considered an impartial board, being that we had been involved in the previous portions of it? How would that work? I saw that was an area mentioned.
No difference than when, no different than when people serve on juries. If you recall, most of the time, particularly if it's a high-profile case, people may have heard some things about the case, and that is certainly what you have done, but you haven't heard everything. You haven't heard from Councilmember Williams. And so what the body, to be impartial, means that you will keep an open mind, and listen to all of the information that is presented, not only by the city, but by Councilmember Williams in his defense.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple more questions. Councilmember Dawkins and Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Generally, how many hours and what might be an estimated cost on, and you're thinking, are we talking $75,000, cost to the city, $100,000? Depend on how many hours, I guess?
Of what?
Legal counsel we might retain?
Well, at this point, we, we are prepared to initiate this action in-house. Certainly, if the council wants to do something differently, then we would have to look at what that legal counsel, or that person's hourly rate is.
All right, and last question, Madam Attorney. I know he's entitled to legal counsel, but that's not at a cost to the city, that's at a cost. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes. The question is that judicial hearing, I believe it's maybe the, maybe the fourth item down, rules of evidence does not apply. Can you explain that to me as far as the rules of evidence not applying? What is that legal term?
Well, it is a quasi-judicial hearing, but you don't want to get so bogged down in rules of evidence that Mr. Williams isn't able to present all of, an adequate defense. We've all watched Law &amp; Order, or whatever those shows might be, where the one side may have some evidence that they want to present, and then there's a motion to suppress that evidence, and people walk away feeling like, oh, I really needed to be able to present that evidence in order to adequate, adequately defend myself. So that's why you want some structure to the process, but you don't want to get bogged down, it so bogged down that he isn't able to defend himself adequately against these allegations. I couldn't imagine 10 of you trying to make objections, and the mayor having to rule on whether to allow the objection, those type of things.
Understand, thank you.
All right, Councilmember here.
Thanks, Mayor. When I look at this, I, I remember hearing some folks say, councilmembers say that we haven't been down this road before, and when I was reading an article in the newspaper, members, it spoke about that item, I think it was called Ticket Gate at the time. And as we go to set bars, in, in a situation like this, and just looking at what was given tonight, I, I, this is what brought up a couple of questions to me, thoughts. You said that in one of your tabs, council must be fair and impartial. So I was thinking, when we do something like this, when, when do we require, as I was making notes, a, a factual record regarding the conduct of this particular complaint? When does that come into order? I don't know if that's something that has been done yet. I haven't read it or heard of it, other than the, the videotape. And when we start to look at our, because a lot of constituents have asked me about the ethics and being unethical, I couldn't ask, answer their questions if we had a policy, what was considered unethical with a council member, as far as anything of, in a set of our ordinances. And I wasn't sure how to answer that. I knew how to answer them, what I thought it was. But do, do we actually have that also? So those were my two.
Yes, you have a conflict of interest ordinance, which is 2-94 in the city code, and that is what the Ethics Commission is tasked with looking at, is violations of your ethics ordinance, as well as conflicts of interest.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. There were some concerns that folks were asking me about.
Absolutely. Madam Attorney, I did have a follow-up question. During that fact-finding process, would there be the ability to question the other parties in, involved? I know that they are not part of this board, but they are, you know, financial partners, and I know that some testimony was given the other day at the meeting by one of the other parties, which kind of, to me, opened the door to a conversation. Is that, they would be sworn in like any other witness in any other quasi-judicial matter?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right, folks, if you've pushed the green, push your red so that I can see it and recognize it. Councilmember Wright, and then here.
Yes, Madam Attorney, just for clarity, we all unanimously signed a letter asking Councilman Williams to step down or resign. Now, this procedure here is kind of like a judicial hearing. Haven't we all already put ourselves in a position, when you're talking about judging fairly, and things of that nature, put ourselves in a position that we've already said that this would be the best thing to do? But have we said that? Have we prejudged the situation now that we have to come back and do this in order to find facts of finding, and, and let, um, um, Councilman Williams set his piece, put out his evidence to prove his innocence? So this body, have we prejudged and put ourselves before the case, and have already stated our position?
No. What you've said is, based on what we know right now, which is based on that tape.
That tape.
We think you ought to resign, and you've asked for him to resign. He has not done that. So now, he may come forward and present some evidence that causes you to rethink that position. And so what's important here is that you keep an open mind.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Council, Councilman here.
Thanks, Mayor. I just really wanted to follow up with the question that I asked through email that the public may not be aware of, but during our last meeting, where Mr. Jones came forward from the PCH Holding Group, and he made the statements that he made, and what my concern was, just as a layperson, not of the law, I was thinking, if there's still an investigation going on by the FBI, why would Mr. Jones with the, the Holding Group come forward and say the things that he said? Because from my little mind, I'm thinking that he was giving away some kind of evidence. So it puzzled me the whole weekend, that's why I shot the email out. So you did give a response, but if you would, just kind of give it to the public for those that weren't privy to my email.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Williams, here. Let me get my iPad. I did not bring that response.
I was trying to find it myself.
As I recall, your, your question basically centered around, why would Mr. Jones come forward? I think that in addition to, in addition to the response given by Attorney Callaway regarding the FBI and them not acknowledging investigations, I think Mr. Jordan, and I didn't go back and look at the tape, but I think he also said it in, in the intro, which was that Councilmember Williams had made some statements, he had passed out a timeline, and based on that, he felt he needed to respond to what he said were inaccuracies related to that timeline and those statements that Councilmember Williams made. In addition, while the, I think what Attorney Callaway said, and I'm having some technical difficulties and can't pull up that email, but I believe what Attorney Callaway spoke about is that the FBI has a policy of not acknowledging investigations, but that policy relates to the FBI. That policy does not relate to third persons. And so in this case, there was nothing to preclude Mr. Jones from speaking on what might be going on.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted the citizens to hear my.
Madam Attorney, I did have a follow-up question. So does the statute give any reference to what activities, what actions, what behaviors give cause for removal? Is that up to an individual body? So I heard you say that there was a violation of a conflict of interest ordinance. So this, you know, notwithstanding this situation, but in general, does the statute point to what type of things a person can be removed from, for? So in other words, is, is this the new precedent going forward for, you know, votes of conflict of interest? Not speaking to this case specifically, but are there any examples with the New Hanover case? I didn't see what was his, what was his situation pertaining to? We all know about the Hope Mills case, and what it was related to. Are there any other examples of, of what the elected official had done that prompted the removal?
It is just a very general standard of misconduct in office, and so it will be up to the nine of you to determine whether what Councilmember Williams did rises to the level of misconduct sufficient for removing him from the council.
Counsel, are there any other questions for? Oh, Councilmember Art?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, in the matter of voting on this item tonight, is, is Mr. Williams eligible to vote on this matter, or ineligible?
Ineligible.
Thank you.
All right. Counsel, any other questions for Ms. McDonald, her team? Right. Just before we look for some action, again, I renew my appeal to this board to make sure that we do our due diligence, and we look at every possible connection to this matter with an independent review. I know that this has been given to the Ethics Commission, but I think that we owe it to our citizens to, to make sure that we have, have taken every option available to us, and an independent party would do it, but at least we need to, to make sure we have all the facts. So I look forward to that, but at this time, I think legal needs some direction as to whether to, Madam Attorney, would this be to set a hearing for this process, or to sign the petition? To process to begin the petition, is that correct?
This would be direction to staff to begin the process, so we would proceed with drafting the resolution for councils, for presentation to the council, and adoption by the council.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I have another comment by Councilmember Wright.
I would just like to put on the record that I, I agree with the mayor with a third party investigating, that you can have transparency and clarity all across the board. I think this matter is too important for the city of Fayetteville, and the future of our city, when you have an elected official on this magnitude, and that we have already voted. Now, we're talking about keeping an open mind, but I feel that the majority of this council has already made up their minds. And so what I, what I really feel, because we don't have all the facts in, and as you have said, you know, Councilmember Williams may have facts that may change our minds. And so we don't know. I, I don't know all the facts. I just know that I want to be fair and impartial all across the board. And, you know, this city council have voted to spend taxpayers' dollars on many items that we feel that's been necessary for the future growth of the city. What matter can be greater? The people have voted, and of course, there is a dilemma. That's what brought us here today. But I would feel, I would feel good to know all the facts in having a third party come in, and I think that that's worth the investment of this city going forward.
Let's make a motion first.
Okay. Councilmember Art, and Chris. Chris is the first time, if you mind.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I don't have an objection to someone outside examining this case. What I am concerned about is the rhetoric I keep hearing. Coming from you, Mr. Mayor, and from you, Mr. Hair, and from you, Councilmember Wright, about other evidence. What other evidence did you anticipate uncovering? You're not going to get anything from the FBI, nothing whatsoever. Unless there's subpoena power, you can't compel Mr. Jordan Jones to come in here and speak to us. So what other evidence are you looking for? Clearly, the tape implies that they want to avoid transparency, don't want the public to know about this transaction, this request for money. What other evidence do you want? This is a motion here to start the process of removing Councilmember Williams from office, based on what nine of us signed that said we clearly believe was unethical conduct. There are other things to Mr. Williams' life that haven't come out yet, and he may not want some of them. want some of them to come out, okay? But I don't have a problem with it, but I, you know, I don't want to spend $100,000 when we can do this in a very simplified fashion, okay? I have no problem with an outside attorney or someone coming in and look at it, but I heard the word audit used. What is there to audit? There are no records that are going to be made available to you. We can't subpoena the PCH records. There's no transaction of money from this council of this city that requires us to audit and which Councilmember Williams is involved in. What we hear clearly on the tape is someone asking for $15,000 because he said there's something wrong with the deed to the property, after a judge said there was nothing wrong with the deed to the property. He asked for $15,000, said it'd be okay, $15,000, words to that effect, would be all right. Now, I don't know what y'all call that. Now, I have made up my mind, Councilmember Wright, I'm always open and willing, because I learned a long time ago, judge not unless ye be judged. And I also understand about throwing rocks at glass houses. I think we all understand that, but we also understand what our ethical requirements are and our ethical responsibilities are. When I go to lunch with members out there, and they will attest to this, I don't let them pay for lunch for me. You know why? Because I have an open campaign account, and if I do, it becomes an in-kind contribution. So I pay for the lunch myself. This is because the ethics standards compel me to do that. We have an ethical standard from a moral standpoint, a religious standpoint, that we have to live by, and when we violate it, we're in trouble, okay? This man is a preacher, and clearly in my mind, at this point, he has violated the ethical standards of this council. And that doesn't mean that I can't turn it around in my mind, Councilmember Wright, because if we find other evidence, but based on what we have right now, there's an ethical violation, and I'm not sure we're going to get any other evidence, all right? We're wrestling with another problem. Mr. Williams rescused himself, and now he comes back and says he wants to withdraw the recusal, okay? I've said as much as I need to say. I'm in favor of moving forward with a resolution to issue the petition so we can start the motion process. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'll go to Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Chris, but before you ask me a direct question, I want to give you a direct answer. I don't know what evidence is out there. We are talking about, Councilmember Williams made a bad decision about transparency. That's the very thing that I'm talking about. And the truth is the truth wherever it goes. And is this about transparency or is it not? Now, we've made our recommendation to him, I signed it, I agree that he has stepped out of bounds and he should resign. He refused, and now this body has to make a legislative decision, and it needs to do it with all of the facts. The North Carolina State Auditor's Office will do it at no cost to the taxpayers, that is an option.
It takes six months.
And they have subpoena power. We don't know how long it takes, I'm not sure. I haven't spoken to her, but if you've got something that says it takes six months, then I think that that option needs to be reviewed. But I can't make a decision as important as taking away who District 2 sent here without having a full conversation. The PCH group are our financial partners. They have taxpayers involved in that project, and they need to be able to answer questions to this body if we have so. So I just wanted to address that part. I don't know of anything, but what I said is that we are obligated to find out as much as we can. But Councilmember Williams and then Waddell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Chris, for your words there, but one thing that you did say, based on your information, and I will say your information is not correct if you listen good to that tape.
Yes.
Just making a comment.
Yes.
Yes, sir, I agree too. I am supportive on the independent investigation. I believe that this body should have a third party to look at this issue, someone that has an open mind, that's not prejudged before any kind of verdict has been already rendered. I believe in the law that gives us a true trial and gives us opportunity to prevent all information and all sides, and I think PCH should be pulled to the table. I think they should be also having to tell their story, because there was multiple phone calls, and he admitted that, right here in open session, that those phone numbers were of the FBI and not of him, but he was on the other end. So there's multiple conversations that you don't know about, Councilmember Chris, that I think need to be brought to the table, and I think we need a fair trial by a third party rather than a few group of people that's already in bed with another investor. Thank you.
Councilmember Art, I missed him, and then Waddell, well, has not spoken as well.
Mr. Mayor, since Councilmember Waddell's not spoken, let me defer to her-
And then go immediately after, sir. And then Chris.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin, and Councilmember Art. I want to just remind everybody that this is not, we are not in a position where we are attempting to assign guilt or innocence in terms of the legality of the behavior or what may have transpired. I think we are responsible for determining whether or not there was some unethical behavior which transpired. I'm a little bit, I would use the word confused, but that's not really the right word, but I'll just, I want to share, you know, originally, when we received this information, Councilmember Williams provided us with a letter recusing himself, and he himself indicated that he was recusing himself in any votes involving Prince Charles Holdings, as indicated to Mayor Colvin and the city attorney, he had a financial interest with regards to this entity, and that he would be recusing himself to avoid any possible appearance of conflict of interest. Now, today, we have a letter, and that was dated the 26th of March, not even 30 days later, we have a letter saying, "I know of no conflict of interest or legal impediment that would cause me to refrain from exercising the right and responsibility to vote. I'm withdrawing my recusal from voting on matters regarding to Prince Charles Hotel parking deck and construction of the baseball stadium downtown because he knows of no conflict of interest." This is, this is just very messy, and I think it's, if I may go out on a limb, I think that it is messy because our peer does not seem to have shot straight with us from the beginning, and I think that's what makes it difficult for us to sit here and expect for an independent review to give us any new information. We have to be able to, before we can actively work cohesively, we have to be able to trust each other. We have to be able to believe that what you're giving us is really what it is. And for me, I don't know that spending the taxpayers' money to dig up and find out more information is necessary because you can, you could have given us your position or your perspective from the day we started having this conversation. And I just, I'm not confident that us digging at the expense of taxpayers reveals anything else in terms of the ethic issue. It may uncover lots of information in regards to the legality, but that's not our, that ain't our bag to carry. But in terms of the ethics, I don't know that we need to dig at their expense. I think that we have been presented enough information, up to and including this letter that we received tonight, to say something is just not right in the water.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Councilmember Art?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this board is more than capable, under the process of a quasi-judicial hearing, to hear findings of fact and to make a legitimate and honest decision. We do that all the time in zoning cases. We look at matters of zoning, we might have an opinion on the zoning before we come into the quasi-judicial hearing, but after we have been presented the findings of fact and we've had a chance to review them and have dialogue amongst ourselves, we come to the right conclusion. And so I have faith in the elected board that sits before you in being able to do that. But I am concerned that there is an appearance, that there might be a willful and coordinated effort to muddy the water on this issue, and to muddy the water by saying, "We can't come to a conclusion and a right decision on that without a third-party paid-for vendor to come in and to do an investigation." We have an Ethics Commission, an Ethics Commission that this council has appointed, made up of an attorney, an accountant, and other board members who are legitimate professionals, have audit abilities and responsibilities and experience, and yet we want to bypass that and bring somebody else in from way outside at additional expense and additional time and effort. If that's the decision of this board, Mr. Mayor, then I would ask that the scope of that investigation be expanded to include other things that I think should be looked at, and that would be the petition that I would make to this council. I am not in favor of delaying this. Right now, as the city of Fayetteville is looked at across the state, there's a cloud over our city. We had been on a glide slope of a lot of great things going on. We were turning the corner as a city with our image across the state in the southeast. People were recognizing us for the progressive efforts underway with our baseball stadium and the economic development, with our Parks and Recs effort, with all the good things, our fight against opioid addictions, all the good things going on here, but now, the only thing that you're going to see and hear in the media is this. And I don't think there's anything to gain by delaying it, by having a third-party investigation other than it's going to linger and that cloud is going to remain for a much longer period of time. I think there's enough information right now that our Ethics Commission can review this information based on our city code and ordinance, can make a recommendation to us, and I think this board has the ability to make the appropriate decision. And for that reason, I would move that we would direct the staff to draft a resolution for petition for the motion procedure to begin and to bring it back to us at the earliest possible date.
Second that motion.
Let me clear the board, and any other comments could come during the discussion phase. I'm gonna clear the board, and then anyone who wants to make a comment can hit it. But right now, we've got a motion by Councilmember Art, a second by Councilmember Chris, there is discussion on the motion, Councilmember Williams, and then Moan, and then myself.
My question-
Councilmember Williams.
My question will, can I direct my question to the city manager?
It's a discussion phase, so it'll need to be in the context of the motion that's on the floor.
Well, I was under the impression that PCH had acts for me to recuse from voting. I was told by Attorney McDonald that I need to recuse myself from voting. I took the advice of this council, and I recused myself from voting. When I hired my attorney, Attorney Poppy, he said there's no reason that I should be recused from voting. So by my attorney, Attorney Poppy, I have no conflict of interest with PCH involving the hotel baseball park. I have withdrawn my recusal to vote on matters involving the baseball project. So I, Councilmember Williams, stand ready for, to fulfill my duty as city councilman as of today in voting on PCH and all ballpark holdings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Moan, and then Councilmember Waddell. Oh, I had myself in there.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's in-
Green this time. Oh, Chris.
I think it's unfortunate that we're here today, but we need to heed our city attorney's advice about remain open and unbiased. When this findings of fact hearing happens, we need to consider all evidence presented during that hearing to include Mr. Councilmember Williams, his evidence. I've got a question for the city attorney related to reading some of the North Carolina School of Government articles about council's authority to place restrictions on council members, like Hope Mills did, restricting places council members can go in public buildings. You can restrict potentially voting on certain matters, whether this recusal or not. What additional authorities does council have?
I'm not sure I understand you.
An example, Hope Mills, they restricted Councilmember Tonzi Collins from certain parts of the city hall.
Yes, sir.
And then they moved his office to the public portion.
Yes, sir.
I'm confused about recusal versus non-recusal. Does council have the authority to preclude Councilmember Williams from voting on anything related to the Prince Charles Holdings?
Yes.
We can do that as a separate option.
You could, you could vote to excuse him.
Right.
There are, as is included in the city code as well as the state statute, the council member must vote on all matters before the council unless they have a financial interest or unless it's related to their official conduct. At this point, the issue would be related to his official conduct.
That's how I interpret it, yes, ma'am. I just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moan. Councilmember Waddell? Oh, and then Chris.
Thank you. Attorney McDonald, my question is for you also. And where, where, I know where it's at, but where'd she go? Okay. I know where it's at, but for the purposes of the people who are just trying to find out where this information can be found, where can, where can one find information about how an elected official for the city of Fayetteville is supposed to govern themselves? So for example, where do you find the, the conflict of interest or the code of ethics for elected officials? Where can that be found?
It is supposed to be on our website, but I did have Ms. Mauryor contact me last week and indicated that she had some difficulty finding it, so I will need to get with the city clerk to make sure. But Ncode is our city code. It's called Ncode.
So it's, it's actually part two, chapter two, article four.
Yes, ma'am, I was getting that.
Okay, okay. I have one more question for you before you sit down, and not to make light of this situation, but sometimes laughter is good for the soul.
It's actually, it's actually, the entire ordinance is 2-94.
Thank you.
And then that particular section that you referenced pertains to the conflict of interest and the voting provision.
And you may not remember this, but do you remember when you provided each of us a copy of the code of ethics? Did we receive that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That was as part of your onboarding notebook that all new council members received.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Chris?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, here's what I see. The, the process, the motion on the floor is to begin the protest for a petition of the motion, which would compel the city attorney and staff to prepare a resolution. Now, if that motion passes, then there is nothing that prevents us from hiring some outside attorney or to, to do some investigative work. By the same token, we can, as a part of this emotion process, hear what the Ethics Committee has to say when, when the hearing takes place. So I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not opposed, I say again, I'm not opposed to an outside investigator doing this, but I'm concerned about the amount of money it's going to take, but I still think we need to go forth. We've got 20,000 people in District 2, more than 20,000, that are sitting on pins and needles, wondering what the status is of their district in terms of voice representation in this city, okay? There's a cloud over that, all right? We need to go forth with this petition, with this motion, and then we talk about whether or not we hire somebody, and also we bring in the Ethics Commission as a possible, as a part of this, this process. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chris, that was actually on my comments, was going to say that at the very least, we need to hear from the Ethics Commission, who hadn't taken their first meeting, and Councilmember Art, transparency is never muddying the water, it clears it up, so I just wanted to add that. All right, we got a motion on the floor.
Well, hang on, Mr. Mayor, because I have my last question.
All right. So Councilmember Hare, and then back to Art and Wright.
Okay, Mayor, and, and council, and when the first day it was brought up by the mayor, I think I tried to bring it up first, but nevertheless, it's forced a third party, outside third party helping us with this. But I'm trying to make sure I understand what Mr. Chris was just stating, to see how it aligns with the motion. Are you saying, well, maybe you need to explain it again exactly what it was that you were saying, because I thought you were trying to add, and I hope that's what you were doing. Okay, you're shaking your head, but were you adding the, that you did not object to the third party being attached to the motion, since it was the Ethics Committee that, did I, help me understand?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond?
Absolutely, sir.
What I'm, what I'm saying, Councilmember Hare, is we go forward with the issuance of the resolution for the petition for the motion. Once that motion is approved, then there's nothing that stops us from a motion to hire someone outside to do an independent review. And by the same token, when the hearing takes place, we can call the Ethics Commission to find out what they have to say as well. No, I'm not, I'm not recommending an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
We just gotta take it a step at a time, and the first step would be, if the motion passes, that staff and the city attorney formulate the resolution to issue a petition to Councilmember Williams.
Uh, I saw a light from the city attorney, then it went off, and then she appeared. So, yes, ma'am.
So, my staff member and I were just conferring about this third party investigation. We believe that if you have a third party investigation, then that frustrates the emotion process.
So they can't work together.
Right. Because then you would have essentially received all of the facts outside of the emotion process, and there would be nothing for you to consider. As a part of the emotion process, there will be some investigation. There will be members that will be brought forward to testify under oath and hopefully would answer some of your questions, but certainly, perhaps we as staff need to understand more about what those questions are so that we can make sure we're prepared when we bring forward the case to present that to the council.
So if I'm understanding you correct, and I've, I've got some other questions. Any third party review, including the Ethics Commission that we voted unanimously to send this to, would not be able to work in parallel to the a motion process? So would that also, would the Ethics Commission's role also frustrate the a motion process like you just described?
If they're going to report to the council.
That would considerably be evidence to be considered. So, give me a timeframe, that, that'll help me. So the a motion process, if you file this, would come up in approximately what? You have, I guess he would have thirty days to answer the complaint like any other lawsuit, or no?
To prepare for, to prepare, yes.
Okay.
We believe at this point, you do have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday. We could probably have the resolution and the petition ready on Wednesday for council's consideration. If council were to adopt the resolution and the petition, then we would move forward with making sure that Councilmember Williams receives the petition from whatever date he receives the petition. We'd be looking at thirty days to have that hearing.
So let me make sure I'm clear. So we're gonna make, this a motion will determine if, if there was unethical breach. The Ethics Commission, who we have to review that, is not going to participate in this process at all?
So let me go back, not, we're not talking about an ethical breach, but we're talking about conduct.
Or whatever, we're, we're considering misconduct, which is, you know, surrounded about, by his ethical judgment, I, I, I will say for lack of a better word. But the Ethics Commission, who we have unanimously sent this case to, is gonna no longer be a factor if we start this process?
That is, that is correct. They would not be a factor in terms of reporting to the council.
Then, so no third party review, and even our own Ethics Commission that everybody on this board has, has asked for, is not going to be a relevant matter?
Well, at the time when you all voted to send it to the Ethics Commission, this process was not.
Hadn't started, right.
For, up for consideration.
Got you. There's a couple of questions, I apologize, Madam Attorney. So Councilmember Hare and Art.
If, if the a motion, we're in the discussion phase, I don't know if this is all, if this is a question, but help me, uh, uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, City Attorney. If the a motion is a process all of its own, and it strikes out the Ethics Commission, which the overall council supported to send it to in the beginning, and we're not sure what the support is of a third party outside of the Ethics Commission or along with the Ethic, Ethics Commission, then I will not support trying to go forward if, I mean, I thought what we were trying to do was to try to find out, you know, where we are. But now, it looks like we're trying to at least take out what we all agreed to send this to. And so I'm, maybe I'm getting a little confused here.
And I do apologize. I think I probably did create some confusion. So let me try this again.
Yes, ma'am.
So if the Ethics Commission could go forward, but the Ethics Commission cannot present its findings independent of the emotion process.
Could it be a part of it?
Yes. So if it is a part of it, of the evidence that is presented, that is fine. But I think when you all talk about a third party review or the Ethics Commission, you're talking about a process that would stand alone. And, and so that's probably where I created the confusion. It wouldn't stand alone. The Ethics Commission would be a part of the presentation of evidence.
Okay.
At the emotion hearing.
Okay.
And so I apologize in confusion, you, Councilmember.
You helped me a lot. Thank you.
All right. Uh, thank, Councilmember Art?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and thank you for clarifying the role of the, of the Ethics Commission, because I was just gonna remind everybody that we did vote unanimously to have the Ethics Commission look at this, and I think they should. Anytime we have a question of ethical judgment by any member of this board or the city staff or city employee, then it should go to the appropriate committee for an appropriate review. So I applaud this board for supporting that. The thing that's most important in this whole process is our ability to reassure our public, our citizens in this community, that this board is going to operate with impeccable integrity, that everything that we do is going to be to the best we can, because there are legal matters or attorney-client privilege matters, but it's going to be transparent, that people will be able to see what we do, why we do it, and how we voted. And, and so people have to have confidence in their government, and that's the whole reason I'm asking that we do this process. Regardless of the outcome, it will clearly demonstrate that we are trying to ensure the integrity of our government and the elected board of this city. So I'm gonna ask you to support this motion for that reason.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Art basically said what I was getting ready to say. I signed that paper a week ago, and I'm ready to move on with the motion and go on with the process.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. I think that we all want the same thing. But I kind of resent the fact that someone mentioned about clouding the waters or clouding something. If anybody up here is purposely clouding this process, they're wrong. And I, for one, definitely don't want to cloud this process. We want transparency across the board. We want to make sure we get all the facts. We want to make sure that we do it right. On this level, this is the first time that we're doing something like this, and I just want to make sure that I get it right. I have to go to sleep at night. I have a conscience, just like I, I know all of you do. And so it may take a little time for us to get it right, but I believe the hearts of all these councilmen and these councilwomen, we want the same thing. How we go about getting to the end is the process that we're in now. And so absolutely, I signed the petition, I signed the letter. We want that, and I'm going to vote for this a motion as well. But the process, the legal ramifications of it, the ethics of it, how we as a board is gonna handle this, is going to follow us for years to come, and we definitely want to be on the right side of history at the end of the day. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I look at this and, my question to you, Mayor, who appoints the Ethic Committee?
The Ethics Commission?
Commission, yes.
Uh, Madam Attorney, yeah, the city council makes those appointments like the other boards and commissions.
Yes. And then I'll look at, before the Ethic Commissioner was even called in, I was voted to be removed. But now we're calling the Ethic Committee to review what was done by the people that actually appointed it. It just don't make sense to me. That's why I'm leaning towards a third party looking at this matter.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Waddell?
If my life is pushed, it was unintentional.
Okay. My apologies, ma'am. Any other discussion on this motion? And so Councilmember Art, just to be clear, can you include, yeah, please restate it, but it does include working in concert with the Ethics Commission, right?
I think that's an implied task to the city staff.
I just want to make sure it's on the record, sir.
No, I think that's an implied task to the city staff. That they're gonna come back with a proposed resolution, they're gonna tell us how they approach it, Mr. Mayor.
So it's on the record, is that a yes or no, sir?
I just said no, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I said my, my motion stands. Now, if somebody wants to make a friendly amendment, they're certainly welcome to do that.
Right here, sir.
All right.
I, I would also ask the maker of the motion that we have this a motion to be aligned in working with our Ethics Commission.
Just get a little clarity from the staff.
Well, let me, Mr. Mayor, if I can. I made the motion for the council.
Right, sir.
That we have the Ethics Commission do the investigation.
Right, but it'll be recognized, sir. Madam Attorney, can you clarify the Ethics Commission portion of, of that conversation? Just so that, so that we're clear, that it automatically works in conjunction with it, you know, not a standalone, you explained it very well, just making sure we got clarity so we don't get hung up on that, because we, we need to bring this matter to, to a close. So the Ethics Commission part is taking place?
You've already, you've already made a motion.
Right.
And as I understand it, they are scheduled to meet tonight.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. All right. So Councilmember Art?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll restate the motion. The motion that I made was that we direct the staff to draft a resolution for petition for an emotion pertaining to the conduct of Councilmember Williams.
All right. And that, that motion was on the floor, and it was already seconded by Chris. Yeah, it, it was the same motion. You've just restated it for clarity. All right. So, council, it's time to look to you for action for the adoption of that motion. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous by those able to participate. Nine to zero. Voting in favor, Councilmember Chris, Art, Wright, Colvin, Moan, Jensen, Hare, Dawkins, and Waddell. All right.
Now, my question, if I may ask. Madam Attorney, please, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Very briefly, Ms. Chris, we got one more item, and we need to.
I know, but I want to know where do we go from this point right now? And what's the timeline that we're looking at? What's the next step? Step two, three, four?
Thanks, sir.
So we would, if this council is so inclined, we believe we can have the resolution. You have a meeting on Wednesday, and we can have the resolution for council's consideration at the meeting on Wednesday.
Thank you, ma'am.
For council to go forward.
You good? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Item four point two, this opioid litigation, but don't go away, it's back to you, Wright. City Attorney had received some bids that she needs to get the authorization to execute contracts for the opioid litigation that is going forward. The city will participate, and I think that she sent us out this information nearly two weeks ago. Only a few responded, and so now we are at the point of needing to make a decision to move forward.
That is correct.
Okay. Madam Attorney, I have a legal question. So one of the applicants that, that applied, if, if the council makes a decision, is there any conflict that that happens to be one of them that I do, do business with on my company's level, with the attorney, one of the law firms? Is that, yeah, so if, if that is the case, just so that we don't have a situation, I may ask council for a recusal on that matter.
That's not, the recusal is not necessary, as this vote does not relate to your personal financial interests. And I assume that the award of the.
Opioid money will not go to me. That's correct. Yes, ma'am. All right.
The execution of the retainer agreement, I assume, would not affect your financial interests.
None of it, absolutely. All right. So just wanted to clarify that so that I'm clear. All right. Councilmember Proton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. After reviewing the three responses to their RFI, I make the motion that we authorize the city attorney to execute contract with McHugh Fuller Law Group.
And that was a seconded by Councilmember Hare.
Second, I believe. Yes, sir.
Could you restate? I didn't hear.
Okay. Can you restate that, Mayor Proton?
Right. The motion is to allow the city attorney to execute the contract with McHugh Fuller Law Group.
And that was.
McHugh Fuller.
That was a motion by Councilmember Moan, a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir. What, who are we giving this con, excuse me? Mr. Mayor?
There were three bids received.
There were three bids received.
Those were responses.
Responses to the RFI, not a bid.
Pardon me.
Um, we got it three weeks ago, about twenty-one different attachments between the emails. Is it permissible to list the three firms?
Sure.
Okay, there was three firms. McHugh Fuller Law Group, which is a group, Napoli, I'm gonna kill this word, S H K O L Nick LLC, and Timothy M. Dunn Attorney. And my recommendation is to McHugh Fuller Law Group.
Play, Councilmember Chris?
Yes, sir. My question, are we voting to give this process to the law firm?
Yes.
The one that you recommended in the motion. Got it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Council, any further discussion on that? Motion? All right. Look to you for action. All right. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. All right. Motion to adjourn? Thank you, guys.